Okay, our meeting is about to get started. First of all, I'd like everyone to stand to pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To their public, we should say, "And to God, we give it his hope with liberty and justice for all."
At this time, we usually, I don't know, can you hear me if I just leave it there? Can you hear me fine? We usually do a moment of silence and in your thoughts, could you keep in your thoughts Barbara Healy, who passed away last week. She worked for the town of Whitman. She was a town administrator. She was a member of the select board and then eventually became a town administrator. She passed away last week. And also in your thoughts, keep, I don't know if you all know him, but Jimmy Loring. He owned TLC and then his son took over the 740 auto body. He died, he passed away a couple of days ago. He's been a businessman in the town of Whitman for as long as I can remember, forty something years. So just keep him also in your thoughts.
Ann Richards.
Say again?
Ann Richards.
Ann Richards.
Ann Richards.
Election worker.
Oh, Rich, I did not stand with. Okay. Thank you. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and televised by Whitman Housing Community Access. First thing on the agenda, what we'll be doing is we'll deal with the first thing on the agenda with the fire department to employees and then afterwards we are going to adjourn the board and move upstairs and continue the rest of our meeting. That being said, we have a swearing in ceremony for our deputy chief, Thomas Ford, and lieutenant Brian Trefry. So chief, can you come up? Let's make it happen.
Good evening. Thank you for attending tonight to the honorable board, town administrator, members of Local Seventeen Sixty-Nine. Thank you and friends and family. Tonight I present to you Thomas Ford. Thomas Ford was appointed a firefighter paramedic in July of nineteen ninety-nine. He's appointed lieutenant in August of twenty twenty and officially appointed deputy fire chief May twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-four. Tom and his family are here tonight. His wife Suzanne, his children Sandra, J.C., Megan, and Tommy. Tommy is a longtime resident of the town of Whitman. He raised his family in the town of Whitman. And when Tom came on the fire department, he was a vital asset to RALs fire department again once. He was one of the first paramedics of the Hyde and truly helped guide the way into getting that system into a great working order that we see today that these members provide. Not to be overdone, Tom has been the fire department's safe officer for a number of years and has excelled both in the schools and with senior safety program. He has truly helped the children and no matter where you go with Tom, somebody knows Tom from the schools. It's very cool that he's had that big impact over generations of children. Tom has an associate's degree in fire science, is also certified as fire officer one and two. Tom is the top candidate in the promotional process and it is my great pleasure that I officially introduce to the board, town administrator, friends, family, members of Local Seventeen Sixty-Nine, deputy chief, Thomas Ford.
Yeah, you get to swear at me. You're not the only one though.
Yeah.
Won't be the last, will be the first, right? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Thomas G. Ford.
I, Thomas G. Ford.
Promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
Of Massachusetts.
Of Massachusetts.
And the bylaws of the town of Whitman.
And the bylaws of the town of Whitman.
I promise to bring to my profession a standard of quality.
I promise to bring to my profession a standard of quality.
And integrity.
And integrity.
So that the conduct of my affairs, of my office.
So that the conduct of my affairs, of my office.
Shall be above reproach.
Shall be above reproach.
And merit public confidence.
And merit public confidence.
In the position of deputy fire chief for the town of Whitman.
In position of deputy fire chief for the town of Whitman.
I promise to uphold such laws and bylaws.
I promise to uphold such laws and bylaws.
To which the office of deputy chief.
To which the office of deputy chief.
May be subject.
May be subject.
I, Thomas G. Ford.
I, Thomas G. Ford.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will perform the duties incumbent upon me.
That I will perform the duties incumbent upon.
As deputy chief.
As deputy chief.
For the town of Whitman.
For the town of Whitman.
In good faith.
In good faith.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
I did leave one thing out. Tommy holds one other distinction about when he had the last remaining active duty background. Tommy honorably served in the United States. At this time, I would like to ask his wife Suzanne to come up and testify, chief for him.
I can do it. That's me, hi. Chief. I think I got it. I got it.
Yeah, it's a lie. You're trying.
Okay, it's almost right.
So the second promotion tonight, as you know, they're going to be going on the call here shortly, but the second promotion tonight is Brian Trefry. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, now I don't have to start with the radio. So I'm going to present to you Brian Trefry. Brian was appointed a call firefighter in two thousand seven. Was promoted to the position of firefighter paramedic in July of two thousand twelve and officially became lieutenant May thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Brian tonight is joined by his wife Lindsay and their daughter Mariana, his mother and his sisters and family and friends, and I welcome you all as well. Brian is one of the last people to be on the call department and has worked his way up through. He started as a call firefighter, saw a career path, went and got his paramedic, came to the town of Whitman, became a vital part of our system, and then through the promotional process came out on top of that promotional process. Brian has an associate's degree in fire science and is also certified as a fire instructor one, which he actually says is probably about a high school. Teacher was okay. Brian was, as I said, was the top candidate and he's been a vital aspect of our department. Started to morph into a great fire officer and I look forward to seeing where he goes in the future. So it is my great pleasure to officially introduce Brian Trefry, that town administrator of the board, family, friends, members of Local Seventeen Sixty-Nine, lieutenant Brian Trefry.
I'd like to say you were the first firefighter that I swore in, I don't know if you know that.
Yeah, full circle.
So either you're old or I'm old, I don't know which one.
We'll sleep both.
Ah, there you go, there you go, I'll blame you. Sorry. Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Brian W. Trefry.
I, Brian W. Trefry.
Promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the bylaws of the town of Whitman.
And the bylaws of the town of Whitman.
I promise to bring to my profession a standard of quality.
I promise to bring to my profession a standard of quality.
And integrity.
And integrity.
So that the conduct of my affairs in my office.
So the conduct of my affairs in my office.
Shall be above reproach.
Shall be above reproach.
And merit public confidence.
And merit public confidence.
In the position of lieutenant on the Whitman Fire Department.
In the position of lieutenant on the Whitman Fire Department.
I promise to uphold such laws and bylaws.
I promise to uphold such laws and bylaws.
To which the office of lieutenant may be subject.
To which the office of lieutenant may be subject.
I, Brian W. Trefry.
I, Brian W. Trefry.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will perform the duties incumbent upon me as lieutenant.
That I will.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties incumbent upon me as lieutenant.
For the town of Whitman.
For the town of Whitman.
In good faith.
In good faith.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, sir.
At this time, I would like to ask his wife Lindsay to come up and officially testify to him. And their daughter Mariana. Also, thank you to the members of Local Seventeen Sixty-Nine that attended tonight. Thank you. And I look forward to what this new leadership brings for the fire department in the future. Thank you.
We are going to watch, we are going to, you can leave it here. We are going to read, we are going to read it to the upstairs in that select committee room. Feel free to stay here as long as you want. But I just want. Okay, now we're going to open the meeting back up from downstairs. So I would like a motion to approve building payroll warrants. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. I need to, a motion to accept the car's bond is in the refile. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Right here. Our next is public forum, is there here, anyone here that would like to speak? Yes, John.
Hello, John Galvin, forty-one High Street. As many of you know, I was on the Whitman Middle School Building Committee for a while. I resigned because I no longer supported the project, but that's not why I'm here. Why I'm here is because I'm still following their meetings and trying to stay up with the information. And over the last couple of months, I've heard a lot of positive information from the middle school. We're, you know, trending under budget and all of that, and that's great news, it really is, with all the concerns that we had. But the concern that I have is not the cost of the project, but it's the cost of the borrowing for the project. I've discovered over the last month or so that they were able to bond the amount of money that they needed for this year and the interest rate that they were able to borrow from is not pretty. It's considerably higher than what we just recently borrowed for the DPW building. In fact, it's very concerning to me. I think it's important that this board makes it a concern as well, because if we continue along this track, it's my understanding that next year we'll probably do another similar bond to what we did and then the year after that, the big bond hits. And if we're borrowing at the same percentage rate that they're getting now, it's going to cost these taxpayers a significant amount of money. I did a quick calculation today on the difference between the two interest rates that the DPW got and what the middle school got and applied it to the full project. I was actually pretty generous because I gave, made it four percent instead of really what the DPW was. Over the course of the bond, the taxpayers of Whitman would pay almost twenty-five million dollars more if we have to go with the bond percentage that the district is now getting, the interest rate, over the course, over thirty years for this same building. So I think it's important, I know that the town, both towns have a, you know, are looking to do an audit and I don't know where that stands, but I would plead both towns to move forward with that as quickly as possible because it's not looking pretty right now with the borrowing for the Whitman Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Do you have anything to say on that? I'm ready to go.
I'm just very aware of the ban that was taken out. It was expected to be borrowed six million dollars at four percent and the ban they took was eight million dollars. They needed more money for the project upfront and it was five point eight seven five percent. However, once they get both of their audits done, hopefully they'll have their bond rating reinstated and they'll be able to move forward with a more favorable rate. So they're not going to borrow according to what I've been told again until at least after the first of the year. And that's the next time they plan to go out and borrow.
Okay, on that issue, I mean, the Moody rating is down because they haven't completed their audits, which makes their interest rates are up. Town meeting voted a certain amount. Do we need a special town meeting if it's doubled that?
So the town meeting voted the amount of the project and the amount of the project that they should be staying on track with. However, the interest rate at which they apply to that product, project does make a difference in the end result to the users, I mean, to the taxpayers. So it's eight million dollars that they've borrowed so far and like I said, they don't intend to borrow until after they get both of their audits. Their audit, bond rating was not necessarily downgraded, it was withdrawn is the term that they used, because they don't have an audit right now for twenty-two or twenty-three. But I know they're working fast and furiously. John Stamper is staying on to do nothing but work on getting the documents so they can get their audit. Once they have an updated cash flow from the project and they have their twenty-two and twenty-three audit, they will then have a rating. Hopefully it will be what it was before it was withdrawn and they'll be able to move forward. So I'm very aware of the situation and have been asking, you know, a lot of questions, so.
My only question is, if the project is going to cost more to the taxpayers because of the interest rates, do we need to, you know, and if they're saying, what's the project, what's the building going to cost, would we vote?
So we voted like a hundred and thirty-five million and the, after MSBA, I believe it's like seventy-two million, seventy-three million in that range. The final number to the taxpayers, I think the original calculation we based that on was, John Stamper could said five percent. Normally a ban is less expensive than a bond. Short-term borrowing is a bond anticipation note, that's a ban, and a bond is a long-term borrowing. What they took out now is a ban, which is not unusual, and then a year from now, the original discussion was then to take sixty million plus the six million they were planning and bond sixty-six million. But I'm not sure, you know, they're waiting for a new cash flow for the financial advisor to update, you know, the strategy and the planning on borrowing.
If, if the borrowing is increased by a significant amount due to the fact that their, their bond rating and their Moody rating wasn't what it should have been, and it's going to cost the taxpayers a lot more, do we need to go back and say, okay, what we thought was going to be, you know, after the state pays their portion, say sixty-five million, now it's seventy million, right? It's going to cost more. Does that extra money need to be before they start knocking down buildings?
Right, no, I don't see it that way. So the project is the project amount and the district cannot exceed the total project amount with MSBA. So the MSBA will have the reimbursement and that bottom line amount will be, you know, right what they had said it will be, it should be right there, a hundred and thirty-five they can't exceed. It's the interest rate in which.
Right.
Borrowed that money. So it's not like you have to go back for a different amount for the taxpayers to approve because the project amount is the project amount. It's just whether or not they borrow at a four percent rate or a six percent rate or, and that's what makes the difference. Plus, when projections were put forward, it was based on the twenty-three valuations and of course now we have twenty-four and there'll be twenty-five and twenty-six and those change each year as well. So the total impact won't be known until we see what they get for a rate and that they are able to go out and bond the project.
If the rate is not what they want and it's going to cost the taxpayers money, you're on the committee, would they consider making the project smaller? You know, you know, maybe not, you know, having such the sizes that they want or whatever. Yes, John?
Hopefully after the two audits come back, this should be, this should be rectified and we should be back on track and their, you know, their interest rate will come down. But this is definitely very much on our, on our radar. We're paying attention to it. Thank you, John.
Okay. That's it, all right. I need a motion to approve minutes for the open session on June fourth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I need a motion to approve the meeting minutes of open session, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Clear the motion.
So moved.
Hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Chairman's report. Since the chairman is ill and I basically have no report. Kyle just has a headache, doesn't feel that well, so I just wanted to make sure, so he's decided to take tonight off. So just wishing Kyle, if you listen to this, Kyle, get better.
Amen.
Okay, under new business, Michelle Lamatina, Dollars for Scholars Holiday Tree Event. Michelle.
Good evening, Michelle Lamatina, Sixth River Birch Circle. I'm here on behalf of the Whitman Hansen Dollars for Scholars Committee. This year, we're hoping to celebrate our fifth annual holiday tree lighting event. Yeah, I was shocked, I didn't think it was five already, but it is. So most of you know, we started this with COVID to try to help with our fundraising efforts this year. We had a banner year in general with Dollars for Scholars. This is one of our biggest events to raise money for the students for scholarship money. So this year we raised well over a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So we had a really great year. So we were looking to have it again, kind of every year, we, you know, it picks up a little bit and gets a little bigger. We add some things to it. So last year, we added having the town hall available for Friday and Saturday during the event. So we would like the event to run December sixth, seventh, and eighth. So Friday and Saturday, town hall, so we could have a vendor event as well as performers. Last year, we had like the Whitman Middle School Chorus, we had a few people in the community, the Whitman Hansen, some of the kids from the band at the high school. So we're looking to have it on the sixth from four till about eight, on the seventh, three to eight, and on the eighth, it would just be outside in the town park, four to eight. We appreciate all the support we get from the town, from the police, the fire, the DPW. Everybody always helps out and, you know, lends a hand and again, it's one of our bigger events, so we hope it, you know, continues to grow each year. So we would appreciate it if we just could have those days with town hall.
I think you.
Would you like to make a motion to allow that the Dollars for Scholars would have their tree, holiday tree event on December sixth, seventh, and eighth? Four to eight, three to eight, and at the, what, at the town hall? Michelle, on the, on the seventh? Rather, on the eighth, in the town, oh, it'll be the town park. Yeah, well, they'll all be in the town park, right?
They'll all be in the town park, but then Friday and Saturday, we like to use the town hall for indoor vendor and performances.
Okay, that'll be in the motion.
I'll make that motion or?
A motion.
Motion, hear a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Go for it. Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So you can just confirm that those dates are good with your office?
Check the calendar and just make sure that's all good.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you for hanging in there. Vote to appoint Sean Simmons to the position of member of the Whitman Historical Commission for the remainder of a three-year term through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, in order to fill an existing vacancy. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion on it? Is she here?
No.
Okay. All right, all in favor? All right, and thank her very much for stepping up. Vote to rescind the appointment of Sean Simmons from the position of associate member Whitman Historical Commission effective immediately. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Vote to appoint Robert Leverie to the position of associate member to the Historical Commission for the remainder of a three-year term through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, in order to fill an existing vacancy. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Hear a second?
Second.
Is he here? No? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Vote to request, vote on the request of the Whitman Historical Commission to appoint Honna Holbrook as a historical commissioner representative to the Community Preservation Committee in indefinite, indefinite term. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is she here? Would you like to get up and speak? Introduce yourself, you don't want to? Okay. Shy, huh? All right. No questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, welcome.
Have motion, second, I'm like?
Yeah, we did.
Vote to appoint Leanne McKenzie as member of the Conservation Commission for the remainder of a three-year term through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, in order to fill a vacancy. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? Is she here? Anybody wants to speak? Fine. All in favor?
Aye.
As long as they fill it, which is fine. Act on the resignation of James Chandler as member of the Board of Appeals effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Act on the resignation of Michael Frank.
Michelle.
Michelle Frank, sorry, as member of Historical Commission effective July second, twenty twenty-four. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Hear a second?
Second.
Any, no questions? All in favor? All right, sorry to see you go. Vote to accept, vote to accept a distribution under the, what's that?
Theodore.
Theodore F. Casey Trust in the amount of one thousand dollars for the Whitman Fire Department gift fund and to authorize the chief to sign the, whatever you call it, Theodore, yeah, F. Casey Trust Fund receipt, trust fund receipts, release, assent, and, what is this?
Detonation.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, agreement, agreement. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion to authorize the chair to sign it.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, I would, I'd like to say that Theodore, Mrs. Casey was a dear friend of mine and her husband was also once a chief of Whitman. And she was a, she was a Whitmanite through and through and she was a person really dear to my heart. And this is a very, a blessing for the fire department and I'm not surprised because she was such a good person. So God rest her and her husband.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is Chief Clancy requesting an out-of-state travel. Oh, do we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we had a second, motion, a second, right? John, you almost lost the money.
Almost. Good evening. Per the town policy, I just have to come forward anytime I plan on any out-of-state travel. I plan on attending the International Association of Fire Chiefs, Fire Rescue International, which will be held in Dallas, Texas this year. It's a three-year, a three-day executive summary sessions held on different classes and the latest advances in the fire service, more geared towards fire chiefs in the executive level, and I'm just looking for approval for the travel.
Yeah? Do you need a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, dare motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Berkeley Botanical Host Committee Agreement. Okay.
Justin, maybe?
Justin, go first.
Yeah, so the, we recently heard from one of the holders of a host community agreement license, Berkeley Botanicals, hoping to open a recreational marijuana store on Bedford Street, that the Cannabis Control Commission had rejected the host community agreement Cannabis Control Commission had rejected the host community agreement with the town of Whitman. The short explanation for why is that after we adopted the host community agreement with Berkeley Botanicals, as well as our other two licenses, the regulations changed. So our host community agreement was signed before the date of the effective regulations with the state. Talking to Town Council, Mary Beth and I had a meeting last week. There are a couple of different options we can proceed, and I don't have that list in front of me. Mary Beth, do you?
Yeah.
So she can run through, I think it was five different options for sort of how to progress, and then I can kind of talk about where I'm thinking.
Okay.
Thank you. So the five options would be, number one, to resubmit the existing HCA with a new effective date. The second one would be to amend the existing HCA in a way that our town council and Berkeley's council negotiate and agree is minimally compliant with the law. Number three would be to adopt the model HCA with modifications, adding some of the existing HCA provisions into the model. The fourth would be adopt the model HCA. There are meaningful differences between the existing Whitman HCA and the model. And Peter did give a client memo on that, which I think Justin can speak to. And the fifth one would be to waive the HCA requirement. There would be no HCA. So those are the five choices.
Yes. So what we've heard so far is that almost every, I think Peter found one example of a HCA that was not the model HCA that has been approved by the Cannabis Control Commission. So effectively, they've released this model and are only accepting the model to approve. The thoughts of Berkeley Botanicals Council is that if the town were to either adopt the model HCA and sign the agreement with them, or waive the requirement that there's an HCA, they'd get approved within, in the next round, within the next 90 days, I think was the cycle that they voted on these. Yeah, pretty quickly. If we did anything else, Peter's opinion was that, or I guess gut feeling, was that they would reject it initially. We would have to resubmit some reason for why this new process. So we'd delay it another 90 days until they have the next process. We asked Peter to do a sort of line-by-line analysis, and it's in your packets. The major differences were a lot of zoning controls. It was things like noise, smell. The one that I kind of liked was the, I think, a timeline for effectiveness. They'd taken out community impact hearings, vehicle management requirements. Those are the kind of things that we put in to be overprotective that aren't in the model HCA. I know something that was close to Shawn when we were negotiating it was some of the specific businesses that we, or specific community impacts that we carved into our HCA to say, this is something that the town considers a community impact. They agreed to it, and would have theoretically made it easier to seek reimbursement from the business for impacts that they're having on the town that other non-marijuana-related businesses have not been having on the community. The model does not include any specific languages. They have a reimbursement process, but it has to be a sort of tracked line item by line item. You can't go back and seek the legal fees that we've accumulated these last two years. So I think my suggestion would be for the town to agree to the model HCA to get this business open. I think we could use the revenue. I didn't see anything that was a real showstopper. I think the biggest hesitation to going away from what we'd negotiated was that we spent a fair amount of money negotiating a contract with this business and two other businesses, and we are effectively throwing that away and signing the model. But putting that aside, kicking this off another six months or so, I don't think benefits the community for what we'd be giving up. You know, there may be some merit to considering adopting the model with some modifications, but that would, it would likely get approved down the line somewhere, not as quickly. And I do think that there may be some, in our existing HCA, we have language that if a more favorable host community agreement is adopted between the town and any business, we would reach out to the other ones and renegotiate their HCAs. Dan, I know you and I were talking a little bit before the meeting. We've seen very little progress in two of the businesses and quite a lot of progress in one of them, the one that's reaching out to us to get open soon. So I think we may feel out if the other two businesses are still interested in pursuing recreational marijuana dispensaries in town, or if they may want to turn their licenses back in.
Yeah.
So that may be a side benefit of changing our HCA.
It's whether or not we opened it up for two more licenses if they choose.
And then we could potentially get someone else that would be a little more eager.
So Peter's recommendation is...
Peter was looking for direction.
Yeah. Peter did not make a recommendation. He listed the five options, was looking for a direction from the board.
But he did say he would not opt for five. Don't worry.
Right. He said not five. Don't.
You're saying four. You think four is the best?
I think four is the best. It does give up some of our protections, but I think a lot of those would be handled in the site plan approval zoning board hearings that we already have. I was hoping to have the chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals here to ask how those processes have gone so far, but I've sat in on a few, and they really keyed in on smells, sounds, the kind of nuisance things that are not in the model HCA. I don't know. I know, Mary Beth, you've had some time with this. Did you have any other particular hesitations with the model or?
And I, after reading everything, I really think it would be three, adopt the model with modifications, or four, the model HCA. I did go through line by line on the comparison, the client memo that council drafted. Some things, you know, will, no substantive changes. I'm just, security was one. Did you happen to notice that item seven?
I did. I think our bylaw covers us pretty well on security. Yeah. So yeah, the third thing we're not really considering, we're looking at the model HCA, the HCA, the zoning board hearing. We also have a bylaw that has, like, I think, I had it pulled up earlier. You can keep talking and see if I can find the security.
So the issue we have is certainly if we don't come to a consensus, if the board doesn't come to a consensus tonight, it would delay it a little bit, but we could put this off to August when maybe John Goldrosen would be able to make the meeting.
Yes, I agree, yeah.
And Kyle would be here as well, and we could ask Peter to come out. Peter was just unable to attend today. So that was, I did go through and highlight some term, and termination was also something that Section 22 of the existing HCA allows the town to terminate the HCA early for a number of reasons, including failure to secure necessary licenses within two years, willful gross negligence, failure to make payments, or material breach. The model HCA does not contain any early termination provisions. But I mean, you know, we can go through item by item, but it might be helpful to have John Goldrosen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's that one, yeah.
And I did, to circle back, I did find that language in the bylaw. So marijuana business provides adequate security measures to ensure that no customers will pose a direct threat to the health or safety of other individuals, and that the storage and/or location of cultivation is adequately secured onsite or via delivery. So there's, yeah. And then there's a traffic demand part of the law. So we're covered a little bit in the bylaw. We're covered a little bit by the zoning board in their special permit process. It's what other gaps there might be between the model and if we'd want to do an amended model to add those back in.
But if we find that there's a few items that we need to add to it, we can amend it.
We could amend the model. Yeah. The only thing is that may take a three-month approval to a six-month approval, or longer than that. But, yeah.
Okay. So do you want to table this item until the 20th, August 20th? Are you comfortable with that?
I would be okay preparing a model HCA to sign on the 20th, and then if we had questions or hesitations amended there, I think there may be, unless, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
With some of the water and those sort of zoning restrictions, is that mostly for growth and manufacturing facilities?
Yeah. And in the HCA, I think it was specific to those facilities, which is not this.
It's not this store.
Does not have any grow or manufacturing capabilities.
Sure. I'm kind of on the fence. I feel like most of it's contained, like you're saying, and it'd be nice to go forward, but I think being thorough, you know, to hear from Mr. Goldrosen and have Kyle here to get his feedback would be nice.
I feel the same, same as you, Sean.
You only talked for a couple of weeks.
Right. And if it's been this long.
Yeah.
All right. So we're all comfortable with, we'll just table it until our next meeting on the 20th? Do you need a motion for that?
Motion.
Motion second to table?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Veterans Citizen Property Tax Write-Off Program Policy. What is this? Here it is.
Okay. So I've been working with Shannon Burke, the VSO, and I think Wendy Jones as well, the assessor, has worked with her on this. It's a Veterans Citizen Property Tax Work Off Program, similar in a lot of ways to the Senior Work Off Program. And the way this is written, I don't know if you've all had a chance to review it, but Shannon has set it up so that the program shall be limited to no more than five veterans per program year, and may be further limited by the availability of staff to provide proper supervision. Basically, the VSO will see who's interested, check with departments, see who has the need for a volunteer, similar to the COA. And they will be able to make, they will make the minimum wage up to the cap. So right now, it's $1,500. The COA program has recently increased that cap, but right now, this program is at $1,500. So it's written that way without a specific dollar amount. It just says up to the limits. So, you know, I can certainly read through this if you want me to read it. I don't know, Shannon, do you want to speak on it at all, or you have anything?
Please.
If you want to explain any more detail.
I don't think we have to read the whole thing.
No, I don't think so.
Hi. So this was, we put this together as a policy. It's going to be very much like the senior, the current Senior Work Off Program. It's run the same way. The only differences are, is that there is no age limit, like an age requirement that you have to meet, and that you have to meet the status of a veteran based off the federal definition of what a veteran is. And that's really the only difference. And it will open it up too, because we have a lot of younger veterans that could use the help, and they're looking, you know, this is a way for them to be able to work for the town and be able to give themselves a financial break with their taxes and things like that. And so we're trying to open it up because they are not eligible for the Senior Work Off and things like that. So just trying to open up to expand our veteran community help as much as we can.
Good question.
Any questions?
Yes. Is there a reason that it's limited to five? Can it be expanded? I just know the amount of people that need help these days. Is there in the future, if this goes well, that it could maybe go to 10 or?
I think that is actually more of a question for the assessors, because it's, again, it's part of the same, like, overlay thing that the assessors have. So that is the number that I was given to the amount that we can start off with. I think that we may, but that would be whether, what their board votes on and things like that. So potentially, but as of right now, that we're...
We'll start with the five. We'll see what the future...
Yes.
It's a start. It's a start. It's just so many people need so much you to do this and put this forth with them.
And this article was voted at the recent May town meeting. So this is just the policy to go along with that. And the abatements do come out of the overlay for the real estate and personal property each year, just as the Council on Aging abatements do.
Is there a question?
Yes. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yep.
Bob Kimball, 877 Auburnville Way. If there's 10 veterans that apply for this, how do we give the veteran that needs it the most the ability to do? Do we give it to people that have purple hats? Do we have people with a disability? So on and so forth. Want to make sure that the right veteran gets it.
Yes, sir. So we are, the way we're going to look at it is all of the people that apply are going to be, you know, kind of, I don't want to say ranked, but kind of put in an order of the ones that are in the most need. If they're already receiving another exemption, they would go below someone who's receiving no exemptions and could really use the program. We're trying to get as, you know, trying to, as I said, trying to get as many veterans help that we can. So I think our most needy are obviously going to go at the top, and then the ones that maybe can wait another year or so would go towards the bottom. It's going to depend on how, like, who applies and where they are.
So if you have a senior veteran that's on the senior program, he would kind of go to the bottom of the list to try, you know, because he's already, they're already on a program.
Correct. And we would, and then a spot would go to, let's say, you know, 45-year-old veteran who owns a home but could use the tax break so that they could come in and do, and work. And the senior veteran would go towards the bottom. Again, I'd love to help submit, like, all of them if I could, but we do have to have some kind of a system, like, looking into that.
Seems like a fair option, we're doing it.
Dan, could I, are you calling?
Yes.
Could you just let us know in the process if you feel like you're getting a good amount of applicants?
Yes, sir.
Even in the middle of the process, give us a heads up and say, hey, there's a lot of people that are really reaching out about this, because, you know, we can't guarantee that we can do something, but I would certainly like to have the conversation. I'd like to know that that is the situation.
Yeah, definitely. You know, as I said, I don't know until we get the word out there that we can officially take applications. I don't know how many people are going to apply. I know with the senior one, there's like a long waiting list right now, so I'm hoping we don't get into that space, but I will definitely let you guys know, depending on how many applicants we're getting in.
Please. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Can I answer your question? Good. Thank you. Do we need a motion to bring this?
So moved.
All right. Second?
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor? Aye. There you go. Set the August meeting. We're looking at August 20th. Is that comfortable for everybody?
Yes.
Okay?
Good for me.
Okay. August 20th it is. All business. Did I talk them? Okay. No. All business. Vote to rescind the appointment of Margaret Schabel. Did I spell that?
Schnabel.
Schnabel, whatever. I don't know. From the position, you weren't how I could say Salvucci. Took me a lot of years to learn how to say my last name. As a member of the Historical Commission, effective June 18th, 2024. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's see, to historical commission decision, grant to receive from CPC and the Massachusetts Historical Commission. What is this?
Mary Joyce.
Yeah?
Sure. Is that it, please?
Yes.
I need my handouts, sorry. Good evening. Thank you for having me back to talk about the grant that we received from the Mass Historical Commission and the next steps there. Honored to be here as a member of the historical commission. Great group of volunteers, many who are here supporting me this, this evening. Elaine Bergeron, Molly Schnabel, and Lorna Holbrook. Others wanted to be here, but they couldn't. So thanks again. So I'm here to talk about a grant we've received and the milestones that we are on track to meet. I'd love to thank Mary Beth and her team, especially Kathy Keefe, for helping us move some things forward that were stuck from our last meeting. And I'd like to thank the IT team for also supporting us as we move our milestones forward. So again, thanks to all the support we received from the last meeting to this meeting to get us where we are. So thank you very much. So basically, I'll quickly go through overview of the grant. It's to conduct a survey to assess and document about 140 selected cultural and architectural resources that have not been previously surveyed but could be considered endangered in Whitman. With the survey results, we are going to submit the properties to the Mass Historical Commission for nomination to the National Register of Stark Places. We're going to provide the town meeting an article for the 2024 warrant that will provide the Town of Whitman with a demolition delay by law. We're going to establish community resources for school system and an interested public. We've already been asked by the architects that are building the new school for some historical items to show, to display within the new building. So we're very excited to work with those, with those folks. So we're meeting with them regularly. We're going to provide plaques to those properties to indicate the history of Whitman. We've already, we've already started to contract with a vendor. We went through a whole process and we're already going to start working on getting some plaques made, which is great. And then we're going to present the inventory for the 150th anniversary of the Town of Whitman. So we're very excited to be part of that and to have some programs there and to, again, show what a great history Whitman has. So we're great there. To return to the next page, I'm a project manager by, by day. So I wanted to show you the key milestones that we need to meet and that we have met. So we got the, we were, we were told in April that we received the grant, which is brilliant. We, a group of us participated in a workshop that the Mass Historical Commission made mandatory. We submitted the single audit in June. Again, thanks to Kathy for helping us move that through. We have finalized the scope of work with the Mass Historical Commission. Mass Historical Society, excuse me, it was approved last week. So we're meeting our deadline of July, which is great. We have developed and drafted an RFQ, so that is in final review with the Mass Historical Commission right now. We're hoping to have it finalized tomorrow, which is great. And we're going to go to post it by next week with, again, Kathy's support. Kathy's been phenomenal. So thank you for her supporting this. Then, as you can see from the milestones, we'll start executing a contract and the milestones go until July 2025. So you've got a whole year with us, making sure we can get this project up and running and the success. Some open questions from last month, but we've got it, we've got support from the senior management team. Kathy's been great to support us there. Just wanted to check if this board wanted progress on our milestones to see, you know, what, if you wanted us to come back every couple of months to tell you where we are and how we've progressed, that'd be great.
Yeah, I think that would be a great idea. So we know exactly how things are going and what hurdles you've been able to jump over and.
Jump high.
Yeah.
That group is great.
Yeah. And if there's some issues that need to be taken care of, suggestions from the board.
Perfect.
Maybe we can come up with something.
We welcome that. And with John as our representative too, we can work through him. So we really appreciate it. Yeah. Great. Again, we got great support from the IT department, so we appreciate that to meet our deadlines. And then we, Kathy was named the point person last month. And so she's been, again, supportive and great as we move through this. So again, again, I represent a really good group. I joined the commission last December. I was just appointed chair in, last month. But again, I've got some great mentors and we've got a great team of volunteers who are dedicated and have been here a long time working, much longer than I have on the commission, but have, have lent the support to Whitman. So it's great. I'm learning a ton and they're here for Whitman.
Mary Beth, would you like to say the gift that somebody dropped off that, that, it's for the historical, right? Oh, it's not for.
Was it a knife?
Shopper and the knife shop.
Kathy was talking about that earlier.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The gift.
Our knife shopper? Yes. I didn't. Oh, I'm sorry.
Does it go in the committee or?
Sorry.
That's right. That was from, you dropped that off, Kathy?
I didn't get the name of the donor.
What, it was Molly?
Yep.
Oh, Molly's got, Molly always has information. She's great.
It, it was the woman who is the chair of the Council of Aging in Marfield, and she's living in Whitman, and somebody gave it to them. So she called and asked if we could take it. And I said that was something that the society would like.
Yeah, okay.
And we were arranging to pick it up, and she decided that she would drop it down in the clerk's office because my gamchurts on the commission. It ended up in Kathy's.
Okay, that's.
Give it to Mike.
Thank you, Kathy.
It's something that is certainly would fall in with all of the other things that she thought that the trozen has towards the.
Awesome.
And we're very excited with, as a team, we've been brainstorming ideas of how to represent the commission and the.
Thank you for what you do.
Anniversary, so we're very excited, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's wonderful. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you. No, I've got a great team behind me, so I'm very, very lucky. Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is Comcast cable TV license renewed, renewed.
Speak briefly about that. I've been texting with the attorney who's going to speak on this. He's 10 minutes out. If there's anything else you might be able to take out of order. Otherwise, I'll do my best impression of an attorney to read you the high points, but it may be best interest to wait the 10 minutes.
Dan, we could jump to John's presentation.
Yeah, one second. Sure. I was off on Comcast. I mean, to move it forward, I'm happy to go through quickly on, on the highlights. If you'd like me to do it, it's what we negotiated. I know you guys have a draft license. So just to highlight, it's a, it's a 10-year license. This is a normal time period that we conduct with our licenses with our towns. We, there will be a peg access support for Eric and his staff, 4.5%, 4.75% of gross annual revenues. We will be increasing the capital dollars that were in the last license to 280,000 over 10 years, which will, we will pay out 28,000 a year to the town on that. So you'll get 28,000 each year for 10 years during the license. You will also get, within 24 months, we will be providing an HD channel. So we will work with Eric and his staff to get that implemented. And that really sums up the, the crux of the license. It's the, the major aspects of the license, which is in Article 6 of, of the license. There's other stuff that talks about FCC customer service requirements and things like that, standard boilerplate language, as I'll call it, throughout the rest of the license. Talks about the term and, and some other insurance bonding, those type of things. But those are your main crux, your highlights that allow your, your peg access to, to operate.
Yeah. Okay, sounds good. I know that the, our community access has grown over the years. It's unbelievable what they're doing.
Yeah, we, you know, as a, as a company, we are actively invested in that throughout all our communities that we operate in. And I know Whitman, Whitman Hansen and Eric and, they have done a, done a great job here and what they've done. So it's a, it's an impressive operation and we're happy to be a partner of it.
Yep, thank you. Okay. Now, does this have to be signed by, this is the K woman?
Do we need to? Right. I would wait maybe till Bill Solomon comes and wants to speak as well.
And what about the fight? What about this one here? For the chief?
We sign the fires.
I'll sign that when we go to exec. Okay. Next on the agenda is Mr. Kane. Your budget presentation.
No worries, he's waiting.
Sean, I think.
Dan, this is the motion that you should read.
And you want to do it tonight or?
Yeah, after maybe Bill speaks when he comes, when he arrives, Bill Solomon, the attorney.
Oh, is he coming?
Yes, he's on his way.
Okay.
That's the wording. That's the wording to the motion.
Just, just this one page? And then once that's done, we'll wait to sign this when Congress, when Congress gets here?
The Comcast?
Then we can sign it?
You can sign it.
Okay. This goes with this.
That's right.
All right. Thank you, I'm ready. I'm actually going to be talking about two concepts tonight. The school assessment formula and also the financial trend monitoring system. The two do complement each other, so I'll read through a couple of things, go through a couple of slides, and then if you don't mind, I'll open up for discussion after that. I was an advocate of hiring John Madden as a financial consultant. The process opened up lots of healthy dialogue and his recommendations have really helped us move in the right direction. For that, we should be grateful. But this last budget cycle has surfaced a vulnerability in our financial policy, specifically with the school assessment. The information Mr. Madden provided us, again, was a good starting point and it helped move us in the right direction, but the lack of clarity and specificity has hindered us from properly completing the budget process. For this reason, I'm proposing that we develop a new formula. The formula that we, that we developed doesn't need to be very complex. In fact, I think a relatively simple formula could be used to explicitly demonstrate how we calculate the budget and distribute our funds. This is important because we want to communicate our efforts clearly to the people of Whitman and to assure them that we are working to improve the budget process. And we want the people to know that there is integrity behind our decisions. I'm sharing this tonight to see if the board will support these efforts and to send a message to other, other relevant, relevant parties that this is a priority and we'd like to include them in the process. Hopefully, this is the start of a healthy conversation that will lead to a meaningful solution. So I am going to propose a, a potential formula tonight, but by no means is it like the end all be all. It's just the start of a conversation. The goal, I think, to develop a new assessment formula is that we want it to be transparent, clearly defined, and easy to understand. It needs to be fair to both the Whitman Hansen Regional School District and to town departments. And I think the, a critical point is that it needs to be responsive to current data. When we look at, when we look at the past 5%, simple 5% rule that we used in the past, it was transparent, but it actually wasn't that easy to understand because Mr. Madden, although they spoke about it in different things, he never actually put it into the report. And it kind of lacks some context around how they wanted, wanted us to implement that policy. So what I had hoped would have led to cleaning up the budget process with the school department, it actually, I think, clouded the issue and made things really difficult. The same thing with the 5%. 5% in some ways seems really fair to the school department, but in other ways it doesn't and depends on if we have revenue, if we don't have revenue. And having kind of just a stagnant 5% doesn't seem to capture the, the complexities of our budget. So having a, a formula that can be a bit more responsive to our current data, I think is really appropriate. So with that in mind, this is what I'm thinking about. And I'll, we'll go over it and it's definitely something I think people would have to kind of think about and have it resonate and maybe even do some calculations. But this, I, I think, like I said, hopefully is just the start of a conversation. The step one, I think we should simply, not simply, I think we should project revenue. This is in line with what the DSL suggests that we should do in the late fall is do a thorough revenue projection. We've done this over the past couple of years and I think we're getting better at doing it. We're looking at trends and those sorts of things and we have financial policy that speaks to how we, how we project revenue. So I think the critical first step is that we do a revenue projection. Step two, I think we should calculate 2.5% increase for all departments, including the Whitman Hansen Regional School, School District. For this, I think it makes sense to do this because by, by, when we're doing the budget process and we're calculating how much we can raise, we can raise based on proposition 2.5, up to 2.5% over and above what we had leveled the year before. So to me, this is the baseline just to see, to calculate what we can raise, the 2.5% over what we were, what we raised the year bef, the year before. And then we decide if we have a surplus, this would be the step 3A, if there is a surplus, if there is additional revenue, recurring revenue excluding one-time funds above 2.5%, then the amount allocated to Whitman Hansen Regional School District will be proportional to the percent of the general fund expenditures that is spent on education, which is currently about 50%. So I know this is probably difficult to see, but this is right from the Department of Revenue. The purple in the bottom, that's how much we spend on education. So to me, when we're talking about how do we fairly distribute revenue, if we look at how much we, we spend on education, then I think it makes sense to say, listen, if we have $500,000 surplus over the 2.5%, then maybe $250,000 goes to education and the other $250,000 goes to the school side of the budget. I mean, the, the town side of the budget. Now, I don't think the town side of the budget should be bound by, you know, 20% exactly has to go to public safety or whatnot. I think it should be more contingent on our current strategic plan and the management priorities to kind of determine where that, where the, the town side of the revenue would go. But I think it does provide a decent gauge for how we should divvy up revenue over and above the 2.5% and how it should be split up. We currently have a status quo, and if we want to keep the status quo moving forward, that would be proportional, which if we're talking about what's fair and what's not fair, that at least speaks to that a little bit. And then if we don't have revenue above the 2.5%, so say there's a deficit, that would be 3B. Then if the projected revenue does not support 2.5% increase, meaning we have a deficit, then the percent will decrease equally for both the town side and the school side of the assessment until the budget is balanced. So we have to, we have to go down to a 2% across the board, including the schools, or 1.5% across the board until we have a balanced budget. So that's, that's kind of what I wanted to propose as far as the school assessment. If you don't mind, I'd like to also review some of the, the other part of the presentation, the financial trend monitoring system, and then come back if we have some discussion. Is that okay?
Thank you.
Okay, so the financial trend monitoring system. On July 9th, Mary Beth Cotta, Kathy Keefe, Mrs. Otina, who's the chair of the finance committee, and I met with Mr. Zachary Blake, who is a financial consultant from the Division of Local Services. This is part of a community compact best practice grant that we received to help us improve in this area. Specifically, Mr. Blake, Mr. Blake and his team are going to help us implement a financial trend monitoring system and in turn develop a financial forecast. He already has lots of data from Whitman through the Department of Revenue, and we are planning on developing a usable report for the fall. This report will be essential for us to strategically address the upcoming budget. With that in mind, I wanted to give you just a, a brief overlook of what, what to expect. So a financial trend monitoring system identifies the factors that affect the financial condition of a community and arranges them into a rational order so they can be more easily analyzed and measured. It's a tool that monitors changes in financial condition. The major objectives of a financial trend monitoring system are to predict and prepare for fiscal distress so that we can prevent fiscal crisis. And to help us proactively implement policy and take corrective action that will keep us on sound financial footing. And then what I did was, there's a, the Town of Northborough that I've been following for a number of years have, has implemented this system. So I figured I'd just show you quickly, just three quick slides on kind of what to expect. This is from a, a report that they put together in 2015. This is from Northborough data, not Whitman data. But this will give you like an indication of the financial indicators, the 1 through 14 on the left. Those are the 14 specific areas of, of municipal finance that, that they chose to, to really dig into and put under a microscope. Ours will probably be slightly different, but different, but it'll give you a, a general idea of what we're, we're going to be looking into. And I think the cool aspect is the, the ratings on the right, in the executive summary, it gives you kind of like a quick favorable or unfavorable. It's almost like a gauge for each of those. So then I just wanted to show you quickly just one of the, this is for one of the indicators. It's a report that they put together for just one of those. And you can see the level of detail, the spreadsheet above and then the graph below, and a quick analysis about when it was unfavorable and why it's favorable and, and how it pertains to trends. That's pretty cool stuff, I think, and really relevant for our situation. This is just part of a financial forecast. The full financial forecast would also include like a revenue projection and an expenditure projection. But again, same thing, like some pretty good detail with a, a spreadsheet and then some graphs to go with it. And then just to wrap up, I thought I'd end with this specific slide, which was taken from Mass Municipal Association. This is a presentation on how to put together a solid budget. And you can see the financial trend and the financial forecast in the bottom right as like really a cornerstone of strategic planning. So that's, that's really why I think we wanted to reach out and get this grant and this resource to really help us in that area. You can see the financial policies and when we move over to capital improvement plan, some of the things that we need to work on there as well. Critical pieces of strategic planning that go into an annual budget.
You had said grant. Is there a grant?
Yes, yes.
Yes?
Yep.
I apologize if I missed that.
No, no. So, yeah, so we qualified for a grant. This is something that we applied for probably about a year ago. So with this in mind, where the Division of Local Services sends out a team, it's paid for up to what, $50,000 or something? It's a good amount of money to put together a report, but it doesn't end but just a report either. There's a lot of like on-the-ground training and that kind of stuff, so.
That's excellent.
Yeah.
On the formula, you're saying like the schools would get 2.5% increase?
No, I'm saying when we're deciding how much we can afford.
Right.
For, on both the town side and the school side, you'd have to go through three steps. You first project revenue, then you calculate it 2.5%. Everybody 2.5%.
Yep.
And then if there's revenue left over, say it's a million dollars, or $500,000, or And then if there's revenue left over, say it's a million dollars, or $500,000, or $800,000, you take that pool of revenue, and then you divvy up that pool of revenue based on this here.
Needs?
Not this, no, this is currently how we distribute our, currently how we spend our money. Half of our money goes to the schools, all of education, actually. So I'm saying if we're looking to distribute our revenue, if we have revenue left over, then 50% of it goes to the school and 50% of it roughly, it would have to be more precise, but would go to the town side.
Yeah, the only thing about it, if we have extra money, and if that 50% goes to the schools, that increases their bottom line for the next year. They get extra money, it depends on what they use it for. They use it to buy, you know, hire teachers or something that's going to be on the next year's budget process, and the money may not be there to handle that.
Well, at least if I understand appropriately, which I think this feedback is really helpful. If it was $100,000, then $50,000 would be going to the school, $50,000 would be going to the town. If it was $400,000, then $200,000 would be going to the school, and $200,000 would be going to the town. So whatever we did, we'd be moving forward together proportionally.
It's what they do, what departments do with that extra money. If that extra money is a following process that the next year they're going to need it, and we don't have it, to give to them again. You know what I'm saying? In other words, if you get an extra $200,000 and decide to hire two teachers, or start a new program, but then the following year you don't have that extra money.
Well, I think that if I could answer you, I think the, this would be based on recurring revenue, not based on one-time revenue, which was a little bit of a bone of contention this past year. So town meeting voted to use one-time funds, and that's their priority, and I think there were good reasons for it. And I think there should be still discretion for them to do that. But as a matter of policy, like this is, we should be moving forward with renewable revenue, not with one-time funds. So it's a good like beacon to move towards, but not set in stone. You know, all of this, I mean, I think that's how all of this should be interpreted, not as something that's set in stone, but as a God reels to keep us heading, moving in the right direction.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, and so, thanks, Sean. I think this is a great first start. I know the 5% has not necessarily been the easiest thing to stick to, either for the town or for the schools. It was a number, you know, based on some work that John Madden did a couple of years ago, but it's time to rethink it. I agree with you on steps one and three completely. I think, you know, finding a way to divide new revenue is the right way to do it. I'm a little concerned in step two, because whenever the Select Board talks about a 2.5% to the schools, when the Finance Committee talks about 2.5% to the schools, it's not necessarily the same as the School Committee talking about 2.5% budget growth. So a 2.5% assessment increase to the schools allows their budget to grow somewhere between 1 and 1.5%. So if town departments are, because of the Hold Harmless situation with the state aid, if town departments are allowed to grow, or the, let's say, non-education general government side of our budget is allowed to grow at 2.5%. If there is a, you know, 8% increase in healthcare and pension costs that comes out of our 2.5%. If the school district experienced that same, you know, 8% increase in healthcare and pension costs, that same above and beyond increase, they are now getting half of the revenue to eat up that change.
Still in the whole time of situation.
They're still in the whole harmless situation. If we were to say this applies to a 2.5% budget growth for the district, it breaks it away from Prop 2.5, so it becomes, you know, that immediately takes some of our new revenue every year, but I think it puts a more equitable start to that system. So, you know, general government can grow 2.5%, School Department can grow 2.5%. New revenue above those parts can be divided up somehow. But that probably does lock us in somewhere around a 5-ish, 4% to 5% assessment increase every year, until the schools come out of Hold Harmless.
Yeah, so that would be good to get some feedback on that. Yeah, thank you.
For sure. But that was my initial, yeah, pressure point with trying to get this rolled out.
Mr. Salvucci, do you mind if I go back there, so if we have some more?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
You all set? Rosemary?
Thanks, Sean. I appreciate this. Your screen about where we're not doing well highlighted an article I put out for not taking a lot of, just getting our state and federal monies in and.
Rosemary, your address?
Four or five Franklin, Rosemary Conley. When we regionalize, we sign a contract, and under that contract, we, and I just looked it up, we abide by Chapter 71, and the similar one you'd know would be 74. And we give away our educational sort of rights, kind of, right after the town meeting, as I was elected as a School Committee member, and I had to go attend charting the course. And they said in that meeting that what we did to try to present a number separate that was broken out was not legal. They had just come down hot off the presses, is what they said. So I'm concerned that this gives an impression that we actually have control of this, and there is a financial process that we're supposed to do to insulate, and that is sort of come to the assessor first, and on our end on the School Committee, have a good sense of where we're going, go to you and the assessor early in the fall, and say, this is what it's going to cost, because there are so many laws and so many aspects to this budget, such as costs of insurance, and, you know, we're looking at our OPEB that's going to affect, at the school level, that's going to affect our bond rating too. It's not as great as what we're doing here in the town. You've signed over your financial rights to be in a regional school. If you want to reconsider being region, you can do that, but you actually can't come in and say, hey, we're going to keep you at 5%. I want you to think of another aspect. The same proposal, that same budget, isn't just Whitman Hansen, it's all educational costs. Now, while you're saying, hey, we're going to be asking for 5% for schools, you're only asking from one school, which isn't the whole budget, and you're going to have a big jump in the vocational. So I think before you start saying, this is how much we have to spend, you have to say, how much does something like this cost? Because we're going to have a big jump in vocational, but it isn't an unusual cost when you spread it out and say, what is everybody paying for it? We're going to have normal costs in the schools, and they're going to increase. One of the things you keep talking about is Hold Harmless. I just left a hearing today for trying to get early education over in Massa Swayed, and some of the conversations off to the side was, well, where are we going to find the money? And some of the talk was to pull back. You don't need to do Hold Harmless, those are the recommendations, and I've been screaming this from high heaven, and maybe they didn't do it right away as aggressively, and maybe there's been talk on Hill that they won't get rid of it. But if they're going to implement that early childhood education, there's a good chance that's the money that they're going to need to use, the needs-blind money, which is really what we're carrying over in Hanson, a lot of needs-blind. I think we might have to start to look at what did we overpay to another community, and how can we get that back? That was $4.5 million, and then move forward in some sort of trending more appropriately. But I want to thank you for doing this, but essentially it gives the impression that you can control that school budget when you've signed the rights away with a regional school agreement, just like you signed the rights away with a vocational regional. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? What are you speaking about, about the $4 million?
$4.5 million?
Yes.
Okay, the $4.5 million, all education in Massachusetts is what's called a combined yield effort, and it's determined by the ability to pay. Within our regional school, some of it was subverted. So Hanson had a greater ability to pay, but it was combined, our aid was combined at the regional level. The laws require that we take a vote in a public setting each time that was not done. So there was no way for the average citizen of Whitman to know that that money was being diverted. That has never been corrected, that's never been addressed by this board. And all of that, if you'd say, oh, we got ripped off as Whitmans, no, the students got ripped up, there's $4.5 million missing out of that budget. And we need to start talking openly and honestly and straightforward about that, because that's the gap, because that same amount's going to pull from other departments. So, thank you.
Dan, can I just respond quickly?
Yes, please.
Just that, I apologize, or I don't want to send a message that we're trying to develop a formula to coerce our Hanson or the school into a budget formula. What I'd like to do is develop a budget formula that we could kind of agree upon early in the budget process, so that when it comes time to actually compute the budget, we're all on the same page, you know, because I believe we are partners, and it was obvious that there was tension and that we weren't on the same page last year. So it would be nice to develop a formula. Again, this is flawed, I'm sure it's flawed, but to develop a formula that we can agree upon and then have some consensus around, so that when it comes time to really crunch the numbers, we kind of know exactly, well, not exactly, but we know what to expect as far as the formula goes. That's the intention, but certainly not for coercive reasons.
Well, I would just like to say that I thank you, and I thank Rosemary, but we have to do something, because everyone matters and everything matters, and I hate to see at the end of the year that we are jeopardizing our town workers, such as police, fire, and as well as school. And I think just bringing this to the table is something that we need for a change and for a new direction, and for all parties to be on the same page. So I appreciate your work and for your conversation.
Good job, yeah. Yes, as I speak on it.
Yes, I'm Kathleen Otina, 344 Washington Street, and I'm the Chair of the Whitman Finance Committee. And I want to thank Sean, he's kept me informed, kept me up to date on his proposal, and also included me on the Zoom meeting with Zach Blake, I think his name was, from the DLS. I think having this discussion in July is a lot better than having it in April. And while, and you've said it yourself, Sean, this is a work in progress, this is a place to start the discussion, it's not the solution necessarily. So I appreciate being proactive. I've met with Mary Beth only once so far to talk about Fiscal 26. I'm sort of doing a recap of Fiscal 25, saying, we really don't want to go back there this coming year, we have to do better. We all are volunteers, we all work very hard, we being Finance Committee and Select Board, and then all of the other departments who also put in a lot of time to develop their budgets. So I think having a jumping platform to jump from, to have this to start the discussion is, in July, is a major improvement over what we had in Fiscal 25. So I look forward to working with you and having continued discussions. It's flawed, I have 100 questions. I have my own little graphs, but I'm not going to show them tonight. But I think having discussions about, with people who have a vested interest, who are committed to this town, and who care about everyone, not just the schools, not just the non-schools, but who care about everyone, it's an important discussion to have. So thank you for including me in the early stages of this discussion.
Yes, okay, thank you. Can we just speak, Rosemary?
Thank you. Dawn Byers, 20 Russell Road, Whitman School Committee Member. Thank you, Sean. I don't know if the Superintendent or the Chair of the School Committee was informed that this presentation was going to include school assessment formula proposal. I came tonight because I saw you were presenting on the budget, so I do follow and I'm interested. So I'd be remiss if I didn't say I'm disappointed that the agenda itself wasn't more clear than in fact you're talking about the school assessment. I'll just make two quick points. And I agree also with Ms. Otina that it's July, so it's wonderful that this is coming forward. North Borough, North Borough, right? Just looked up per pupil expenditure on DESI. So I hope that when we look at their practices and what they've implemented since 2015, that per pupil expenditure 2015 was $16,000, Whitman Hansen was 11. 2022, they're up to $20,000. It's $19,998, and we're at $16,000. So just understanding where their overall school is funded in relation to their practices and how they're continuing to fund may be different to the needs and the deficits that we have for our students here in Whitman Hansen. And then the second point, can you go back, please, to the chart, the pie chart, if that's Or just to reference the 50%? Oh, you're right there. Thanks. So 50% of Whitman's funding goes to education. I can't speak to the current funding in Rockland, but I know historically, the Rockland Select Board at one point in time was dedicating 70% to 75% of their new revenue to education. That's a reference, new revenue, right. And that's what you're referencing, new revenue would go to education. So, one moment, one moment, still speaking. So I would hope that we consider what that means to, you know, the overall funding. And lastly, I was also at the Massa Swayed today with the Education and Childcare Task Force with Secretary of Education Tuttweiler, and the fourth takeaway is that education begins at birth. So early education is the future, and I'm glad that we're supporting families with universal full-day kindergarten. But there is a need to support all children and families in town, and I hope that we can speak to that in the future, specifically maybe even the piece of land the town holds that has a deed restriction with education. So, and that would be Park Ave, because we get a lot of questions, why aren't we using that? So, thank you.
Okay. When you spoke about Rockland, also remember, Rockland has a bigger tax basis than Whitman does. I mean, they have an industrial park. I do not know if their tax rate is the same for businesses and homeowners, like we have factor one. I don't know what their factor is, but they have a lot more businesses than we do.
If I may.
And more revenue.
If I may, does that mean that their children deserve the benefit of certain educational programs more so than Whitman, simply because we don't have that?
They may, I don't know, what's their school enrollment? They're not a regional school. What's their school enrollment in Rockland?
Mm-hmm.
I don't, you know, I don't know. I know that.
You mean, do they have declining enrollment?
Yeah.
No, it's stable. It's stable, they're not losing students.
Okay.
Because they're funding programs.
So, I mean.
Thank you.
I don't know, it depends what the need is. Any else? Should we jump back to the cable?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to step back, and I am going to read the motion to.
We have.
Wait, did the captain speak? Yes.
Good evening, thank you very much. And I apologize for being late. I used to live in Stonem, and I would come down three, and Whitman's a great place to come, quite, you know, quite far, but a wonderful place. I moved about 10 years ago to New Salem, Massachusetts, and partly because my older daughter is going to college, I got my first iPhone just two days ago. And I was coming down, and it would not allow me to use GPS without the app, and it wouldn't let me get on the app. I proudly came from Stodden to here, and I've come backwards, but that was why I was late, because I had to go through the backroads to Whitman, and I was glad to get here. So thank you, but I apologize for being late.
No worries.
So William Solomon, your special cable counsel. I've worked with the town for about 20, 25 years. When I first came, I was working with Frank Lineham. We're dealing with a tough crew at that point at Comcast. The town was transitioning from a company-run program, as you know, Steve Roy worked for Comcast. The studio was where it is now, but it was owned by Comcast, and Frank and I negotiated, and they first wanted to sell it for $250,000, and I said, no, we'll get it for a dollar.
That's right, I made that motion, I was Chair of the Board Select.
That's right.
At the time, yeah.
And so we got it for a dollar, and we got Steve Roy.
The equipment.
And the building, the deed for the building. Equipment for a dollar, that's right, equipment for a dollar, and the building also for the dollar. And that began what's become a wonderful program here in Whitman, together with Hanson. You know, really, there's no better program in the Commonwealth. I work from Pittsfield, North Adams, to the Vineyard, and there's really no better program than you have here in Whitman and Hanson. And frankly, no better director, as you know, than Eric Dresser, who is a one-person show with respect to both programming and technical ability and organization, and also, we know, license renewal. So we're here today, hopefully, to get a vote of approval. I'm sorry I missed Mike Gala. Mike did speak to you, the Senior Government Affairs Manager for Comcast. You know, great insight into figuring. You know, great insight into figuring out, how much does the town care about community television and PEG access, Public Education Government Access? And what are those needs? He's a tough negotiator, but he also understands what's important about cable for both the town and the company. And it really sizes up the interest and the need in each community as to funding needs. And that's why I believe we have an excellent license because through your team, Kathy Keef. And thank you for every, any town that dedicates an administrator to a cable license does far better than a town where, you know, people don't have the time for that because I can say my wife's a town administrator. There's a lot of things to do and cable isn't always first. So I like to thank Mary and the board for allowing Kathy to work with us very much in the weeds, very much in the details. And this license reflects very much Kathy's great work. So with that said, I know I provided a summary. The update, there's two changes, really not even a change. One number we didn't have when I first did the summary is that when there's an upgrade of the standard definition peg channels, two of the channels will go to Serial Digital Interface, SDI, a higher-quality picture and sound. And that'll require encoders since it'll be nailed through light rather than just through copper. So that'll require encoders. And one of the channels will, well, they'll add a high-definition channel and that will require an encoder. So that'd probably be two encoders, two for the SDI and one for the HD. The third standard definition channel will not be upgraded and I'll get into that in a minute. Comcast, for the last four, five years, has been looking for funding for those encoders. They'll be, they'll own them and maintain them, repair and replace. But they were looking for some initial funding for that. And we now have that number, which is $10,000, which frankly, I've seen numbers, $20,000, $30,000. And in dealing with Mike, we basically focused on what these encoders cost and it's a cap of $10,000 and they'll still have to provide an invoice. So that's the only material change, which, additional information. And also, I made a correction with respect to the extension of cable service. And everyone in Whitman now has cable service available. But if there is a need for an extension, there's no density requirement. And we fought that battle two licenses ago and hasn't changed so that the system would be extended without the need to have 20, 30, 40, 50, 60 dwelling units per mile. And again, you're fully built out, but you know, there always can be a few homes here or there. So with that said, the summary, it reflects the last summary. And just, as you know, there's PEG operating funding, supporting the program, the operating cost. That's at 4.75% of gross revenues. The maximum's five, but if you went to five, you would lose some dollars for some deductions. So 4.75 is an excellent place to be. Most importantly, and this was a highly negotiated dollar amount, and I thank Comcast for understanding the importance of the equipment in your studio and the remote equipment. The PEG capital funding is $280,000. And that's paid $28,000 a year over 10 years. That's a very strong number going forward in a, you know, in a fast-changing video world. As mentioned, we're going to have a high-definition channel within 24 months. We'll also have two improved standard definition channels. And at that point, you'll have the three standard definition channels, two of which within 24 months go to the higher standard. And you'll have the HD. So you'll have three standard definition and one high-definition. 24 months after those channels, the HD channel is provided, Comcast has the right to reclaim that additional SD channel. So we're going to have one SD channel that's not going to be upgraded. Can have the two upgraded, the one that's not upgraded, and the HD. 24 months after the upgrade or the addition of the HD channel, Comcast will have the right, but you know, not the obligation and it may or may not exercise that right, to take back that additional standard definition channel. That was very important to your negotiating team, very important to Eric, because you didn't want a situation where you get a high-definition channel, which will be in the higher numbers, and all of a sudden, the other channel disappears. Then this board will, together with Access, decide what that high-definition channel will be used for. Will it be used for to replay or play the same programming that's on the public or the government? Or will it be a best-of channel? That'll be your decision in consultation with Whitman-Hanson Access. I will say this, when I first began thinking about high-definition channels and Access folks have been thinking about this for 20 years, the thought was that that channel would be used for, most likely, for public events, outdoors and sporting events and things that deserved up close and personal and great visuals. But interesting enough, that it turns out that there is a strong interest among towns to have the government channel be the high-definition channel. Because when you do your presentations, people at home can read the graph and can read the spreadsheet and can follow along. So you know, that's a decision you'll have going forward. You don't have to make it now. Summing up, there's a senior discount. It's voluntary for a company. They don't have to provide it under the Cable Act. Most companies don't provide it. And I say it's not, it's not going to make the difference between great wealth and poverty. Sometimes they say it reflects what they do in Calderon and Anan Hope. But Comcast doesn't have to provide that and it does. And I, you know, we're grateful that they continue to provide that senior discount of $2. And we have larger, there's a financial qualification, but we have more categories of financial qualification here in the Whitman Senior Discount Letter than elsewhere. So with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, I'd like to thank the team for working together. We've been at this for probably about two years. And it's a license, I think, that reflects the hard work of your team.
Looks great, thank you.
How do you get the senior discount? Where do you go?
You know, you just have to, you just have to call them up or apply. I will say this, that no cable company creates big banners saying, please apply. But one of the things you as a town can do is put it on your website and let people know that there's a senior discount available, maybe a few bullets, and put the name, the number, the telephone number for the cable company so people can reach out. I should also say Comcast is a leader in, trying to think of what they call it now, but in their program for very inexpensive, you know, low-cost internet service. Or it used to be for students and for seniors and now I think it's for anybody. And Internet Essentials. And Mike and the Government Affairs people at Comcast are proud of that. They're encouraged to go out into the community. If you ask Mike to come to Whitman, to go to the senior center, to go to the schools and to let the people know about the Internet Essentials program, which is very, very inexpensive to sign up, they're happy to do that. And sometimes I suggest, vis-à-vis cable, is ask your cable company once a year to go to the senior center and to meet with seniors about various options available for all three services that the company provides. We only regulate and license cable, but of course, they also provide, because they have a cable license, they can provide internet and telephone in Whitman, of course, which they do.
Do you have an age for the senior? Like I found out I was a senior at Dunkin' Donuts last month. It's still blowing my mind.
Well, when I moved to Western Mass and I went to the, my kids go to the Mahar Regional School and the senior price to get into the football game was, I mean, age, was 55. I said, wow, that's like a parent in Eastern Mass. So 65.
Okay.
And it's been that for a while. And again, I encourage people to apply for that.
I will certainly let people know because I'm not sure people did know that. So thank you so much.
Sure.
Every little bit helps everybody these days.
Exactly.
Won't help me, I'm still too young, but that's okay. I can get a discount on my coffee.
Is that it? All right, move a motion to.
And if I may, very tiny, I actually added one other item to that motion at the end acknowledging the senior discount, so.
Nice.
They can come up the center of the day.
Final paragraph.
Okay, so maybe if you could.
So I'll read that one.
Please.
You can have that back here. You want all the motions? Okay. This is a motion I hereby move that the board, that the board has cable TV license issuing authority. Vote as follows. To grant the subject cable television renewal license with the license renewal term of August 1st, 2024 to July 31st, 2034. To Comcast Cable Community Management, LLC, Comcast. All items and conditions contained in this renewable license have been agreed upon by Comcast, by Comcast, Comcast by, by Comcast. Comcast by and through its authority, representatives shall execute this renewal license in agreement as set out on the signature plan of the renewal license. The board also acknowledges a senior discount letter from Michael Kayla, Senior Manager, Government Affairs, Comcast dated this July 23rd, 2024. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, good to be here.
Thank you for all your work.
We'll have this signed for you?
Yeah, and in fact, I can sign too. Great, anyone?
Thank you all, and make sure, I recognize my staff too. It's not, I'm not the one-man show. I'm following on my other staff as well.
Okay, next on the agenda while we're signing that is I'd like to make a notice that on August 7th, 2024, at the Whitman American Legion Post 22 at 4 o'clock, there will be a Purple Heart ceremony. And if you'd like to be there, it's at 4 o'clock at the American Legion. And I will be reading the ceremony.
Proclamation.
Proclamation. So just wanted to let everybody know. It's August 7th, 2024, at the American Legion Post 22 at 4 o'clock. Okay. Down the agenda, we're going down to.
Town Administrator.
Yep, Town Administrator's Report.
I was going to mention Purple Heart, but you took care of that. So thank you very much. One other item is a cybersecurity grant and the Healy Driscoll Administration awarded nearly $7 million in cybersecurity grants to local governments and state agencies to enhance cybersecurity initiatives and to reduce cybersecurity risk for public agencies across the state. And I'd just like to congratulate our IT Director, Josh McNeil, who applied for this cybersecurity grant for the town of Whitman. And on July 15th, the town received notification that Whitman was awarded $80,050.
Nice.
Which is great. And not all towns received this, not all towns applied. So this is really great. And you know, Josh did great work to get us that.
He did a good job.
Allowable projects under this grant program include the development of a written cybersecurity incident response plan, tabletop exercises and cybersecurity awareness training, as well as other cybersecurity initiatives. And as we all know, especially after last week, cybersecurity is very huge right now. That's great. And that's all I had really for the Town Administrator's Report.
Okay. Then I am going to need a motion to an executive session pursuant to Master General Law 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or conduct collective bargaining session or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. That's our Deputy Fire Chief. And then they will continue with another executive session pursuant to Master General Law 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in the preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with the non-union personnel, Fire Chief. And then the third executive session pursuant to Master General Law 30A, Number 21A3, for the purpose of discussing strategy as it relates to collective bargaining and litigations with the Whitman Police Union, Mass Cop Local 494, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining positions of the committee as declared by the Chair. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Hear a second?
Second.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, we'll be going to executive session.